Hi, I'm Miss Caliber. Wanna play? Happy Halloween, guys. It's your boy, it's Caliber. I just wanna thank you guys for liking and subscribing to the channel. Keep watching, keep liking, keep commenting, whether good or bad, we love it. If you guys support us, thank you. If you don't, thank you. But again, I hope you guys enjoy the show. Today, we got Jamil Sahir of Clanton County, running for Clanton County School Board, and also my boy Reggie Wright Jr. to talk about a little dirt. Enjoy the show, guys. Peace. Yeah, yeah, yeah. You know what it is. Another episode of the Miller Experience Overtime, where you know with our co-host Craig and Victor. I wanna thank you guys for watching the show, liking and subscribing to the channel. Currently, we have seven hundred and eight subscribers. I told you guys about the goal, the goal by January is a thousand. So keep on liking, keep on subscribing, keep on commenting, whether it's negative or good. We all love it. You guys know November fifth, next Tuesday, a very special day. Not only for the presidential election, but also your local. Y'all know my thing, right? After president election, what counts has happened in your hometown. Alright, so. With that, with that being said, we got a very special guest today. My boy Jamil Zahmir, he's running for the Clanton County School Board. Now, before, before he gets started, I just wanna say this. I'm a big believer, and instead of you complaining about it, you make the change. You go in and make the change. That's one reason why I went law enforcement. I wanted to be the change. If you complain about what's going on in your schools, how your teachers teaching your kids, or whatever going on in your community, this is what you do. You run for a seat. You know what I'm saying? You fight. Whether you win or lose, they're gonna hear you. You're gonna make some type of change. And that's what my man Jamil is here for. What's up, Jamil? How you doing, brother?
And I wanna appreciate all of you for allowing me on the show. I, I thank you for that, man, and I thank you for the, the opening, the introduction, and I'm ready to get started. Questions?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So Jamil, tell the people about yourself, man, um, who you are, where you from, and um, what's the reason why you decided to run for the Clanton County School Board?
Right. I'm Jamil Salibah Amir. My, my government name is Johnny Wilson. Uh, the name Jamil was given to me, uh, by a, a religious woman. Given to me over a three-year period because of the work I do in the community. Uh, I adopted the name. I love the name. I, I think it, it represents me well. Uh, I am a native of Clanton County, but I am a traveler. I've been overseas. I've, I've lived in Bahrain, uh, in Dubai. I lived in, uh, Virginia DC, so I've traveled around, um, Atlanta. So I know a lot of places and I see ahead of time what's gonna happen here in the South. It's, it's nothing but a trickle-down. Uh, most people don't get it, but by God's permission, I see it. And so I wanted to step in the race and try to uh, maybe help the situation along, because I'm not saying that the people there aren't doing a good job. They kept it going to this point. So I'm not here to bash or do any, just that I see that the children are not grasping the idea of school, the idea of education, the idea of what education will do for their future. A lot of them are not grasping that. They see school as a punishment. So I wanna try and get in the race, well, I'm in the race. I wanna try and help our young people, uh, uh, acclimate themselves to the idea of learning.
What are some changes? This is my personal question. So I, I recently I went to a parent's, uh, it's an event they had at the school with the te- parent teachers. And it seemed like these teachers are overload, man. You might have a kid that's struggling in two classes, and you want them to stay at the school for some help. But it seemed like they all stay at the school the same day, Tuesdays from two to four. If a child is struggling in two classes, and she need help, he or she need help in one, in, in one class, how can she stay on a Tuesday and probably need help with another class and you know, can't, won't be able to, you know, that, that, that get that assistance from their teacher. And the common thing that I hear from these teachers is, oh, man, we got too many students. I got over a hundred and seven students. I just didn't realize, you know, such and such is not doing as well in the class. But who fault is that?
Well, you asking me who fault it is? Uh, I, I, I don't know if I can say whose fault it is simply, uh, but because I don't wanna get into a, 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 a mudslinging thing, but what I do know-
Let me rephrase that. I'm sorry. Let me rephrase that. What can you do is if you become a school, if you become the school board, on a school board, what can you do to be able to prevent that? Maybe try to make it easy on the teachers? With the students, or is anything you can do about that?
Yes, sir. Well, I don't wanna, I, I don't believe in making false promises, so I don't, I don't know the particulars of the position of a school board member. Uh, because that bit, that position was appointed until this point, but what I will say, the same as you, that after, um, speaking with teachers, I, uh, from right out of their mouths, some of the students, after-school programs, they don't have a ride home. So they, they're not able to either work and I don't have, uh, transportation. And another major thing that is occurring, and I don't think most people realize this, is that, and I don't know who to put this on, uh, Mr. Miller, to be honest with you, I don't know, so I won't say, but children, children are being promoted to the next grade without having the full knowledge of what they were, the grade they were in. They're not reading correctly, they're not comprehending correctly. They don't have their behaviors in check. So who's allowing them to keep elevating when they're not getting the, the education from the, the prior class? And on top of that, why would you put the burden of that on the seventh-grade teacher when you didn't do it as a sixth-grade teacher? Now, the seventh-grade teacher has a overloaded classroom, uh, with students, as you were just saying, that you have to separate in order to teach. What I would do about that, what I would hope that I would be able to do about that is to catch the problem in its infancy. I would hope to be able to, uh, uh, at least test these children, not like the end-of-the-year testing, but just a standard test to see where their learning, uh, level is, so that we can get them the help they need before they move to the next grade. There's really nothing wrong with being held back, but it's just like losing a fight. People make you think you're horrible because you're the worst because you lost a fight, but at least you fought. At least you tried. So you have to be held back. There's nothing wrong with that if it's gonna help you in the long run. So I believe that we should really just look at these students, see their, uh, uh, inconsistencies, their issues, and most of them, believe it or not, are mental. They, they have mental issues.
Okay, um, I have a question. I'm sure you've thought about this. Um, parents, what are you thinking about to get the parents involved? Because as you know, a lot of this starts at home.
Yes, I, I agree with that. Um, it's, it's very difficult to get the parents involved, and I don't wanna make some quick, you know, get rich, get quick, you know, scheme to make it sound like we can do that. But what I know works for parents is getting them excited about their students and allowing them to see that their students have changed because of their time in the school, because in actuality, a child spends more time in the school than they spend with their parent. They really do. Uh, they spend more time in the school than they do with their parent. Now, when it comes to the parent and getting them excited about the learning process, I know it can be done because they all show up for the football games. They all show up for the sports events. They're not excited. Sometimes the parents don't even realize the importance of education. They think, my child would get a, a, a scholarship and go to college, but how are you gonna remain in college or succeed in college if you can't even succeed in high school? Sports and academics are not the same.
Hey, Jamil, I see more parents at a sneaker ball than at a PTA meet.
Exactly. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And that, and that is an issue, and I don't wanna condemn the parents because I know it happened with them. It happened with me. My mother, I don't think my mother ever showed up for, for, you know, when I went to school when it was report card day. But I understood her condition. We understood during that period. Mama was tired, so we had to go home and work and do all of that, but now these children have become complacent. They are lazy. They're very disrespectful, and that part, sir, starts at home. Uh, Mr. Greg, Craig, that part starts at home. Uh, and unfortunately, uh, we're not teaching our children how to respect the teachers. And from what I saw with the teachers, as you were saying, Mr. Miller, they are worn out. You are actually finding teachers that drink before they come to school. I know for a fact, some of them, if they're into the marijuana, they smoke before they come to school. It's that, it's no joy in the job anymore. How we can fix that is we must bring everyone together and let everyone voice their opinions. And it's not gonna change overnight. It, it took all of this time to get us in it. It's gonna take all this time to get us out.
Uh, and, and talking about teachers, you know, and, and this is a problem nationwide when it comes to teacher recruitment and retention. I mean, at, at, we're at a point, forty years ago, I'll say forty years ago, higher pay probably would have fixed the problem. But we are pet, higher pay was, is not gonna fix the issue now. So I just gotta ask, have you thought about, maybe how can we how, how, how do, how can we get and keep good teachers? Because there, there, and I, and I add this, most teachers are, are quitting within the first four years, which is really, and that, and I quit, I did about three. It takes about four years before you're really even comfortable and have a groove about what you're doing in the classroom. So teachers are quitting at a time when they couldn't be producing their best work, but already burned out and, and by then, so. I, I just wanna let you speak on that, on that.
Well, I, I think, um, honestly, um, uh, Wes, that, um, Wes or Victor, which would you prefer?
Victor's good.
Victor, Victor. I, I think that, and I don't know if this is being done yet, but I think each teacher should be assigned every time they have a class, they should have an assistant with them in the classroom, all the time, not just some of the time. And, and I know for a fact that the money is available to do that. My concern is that we're allocating money in places. We're building buildings, but we're not building character or building people. So people get excited about seeing new buildings, and then you sell that building and you build a new building, but the, the people are still not growing, not being educated. And I'm telling you, if this generation does not get the idea of how important education is, we're gonna lose. We're gonna lose because they are, they are devolving. They're not evolving. But in their minds, they're evolving because they're doing what the world says to do. And education, no one wants a person who's intelligent enough to, to, to go against them. So what we want, are we want people to just follow us into whatever we're doing. So I'm concerned that the, the idea of education is counterproductive to those who want to hold control. Because the people in control are those who are setting up the school system. So that's my concern. And what I hope we can do about that is just, just put in a little, a different idea, a different voice, and let's see in the next four years if something changes for the better.
Jamil, let me ask you this. What's your thoughts on education now? I know a couple of teachers, three teachers exactly, that has their kids, their, their kids doing homeschool instead of actually going to school, and they're teachers. So what's your thoughts on the, the education?
Okay, well, I, I'm concerned about the education. My son, uh, Zion, just, I had him in school, in regular school for one year, and I would watch him every day I would come to that school. And every time I look in that classroom, Mr. Miller, my son is up walking around and and, and I ask the teacher, what, what's going on? So, well, we believe in allowing them to have freedom. Well, he got freedom. He don't need freedom in the classroom. He needs to be able to sit still and listen to what you're saying. So what I, what I did was, I took him out of school and I homeschooled him. He, he, he had the obligation to graduate in the tenth grade. He could have graduated in the tenth grade because we got all of his credits, all of his classes. And so I took that route. And I, and that's why I wanted the voucher program, and I know we're not talking about that, but I wanted the voucher program to be instated. I wanted it to work. Not to take away from the school or the teachers, but so that the school would realize these children can be taught, they can be educated, they can grow, they can be excited about education. And so that challenge sometimes, and, and you, you, Mr. Miller, you are a person that, you, I know you love challenge. But sometimes to challenge a person is a good thing. You bring out the best in them. Not to abuse, but to challenge. So when they really realize that, oh, I can actually learn this, you know, uh, they will get excited about it. In my speech with the Rotary Club, I said that I thought that we should introduce day trading as a, um, what do you call it? A vocation, you know, like at a school, because as personally, I know that day trading can get you money quick. On computers, all, on their phone all the time, hanging with their buddies, hanging on the corner. They could be talking about penny stocks. Twenty-five cent stocks. And you talking about me, they looked at me strange for that, but I said, I guarantee you, if you teach them that and show them that school means a better life, I believe that they will be more eager to do better in school. It did it for me.
So let me ask you this. Is that one of your goals for the position you run in on the school board, to try to insulate stuff like that in the school? Because back when I was in school, I went to high school in Jacksonville, Florida. And we had stuff like wood shop, um, we had real estate classes. You know what I'm saying? Because realistically, not realistically, but times, some kids don't wanna go to college. You know what I'm saying? Because you don't have to go to college to be successful in life. There are trains out there where you can make money, more money than somebody got a degree. You know what I'm saying? So that, is that one of your goals?
That is absolutely one of my goals. There's a, there's a, a deacon, uh, I know I can say his name, it's not a problem, but Greg Martin, Greg and Barbara Martin. They have an organization called, um, The House of Hope. Greg, uh, went to vocational school. Greg, uh, shadowed his grandfather, and Greg is now a master builder. He can build bridges. He can do anything. He's building a new house now for himself. He, you name it, he can do it. He didn't go to college. He didn't go to college. And he's actually talking to the school, trying to implement his skills into the school system. So I would advocate for him. I would advocate for them, because some of our children, I'm not saying our children are gonna make As and Bs. I was a B, C, and D student. No need to lie. I was a B student because I understood college, you know, I understood, uh, education better then. But I think that this will encourage our children to not feel ignorant, and I'm gonna use this word dumb, because when they feel dumb, they're gonna act out. They're gonna leave, and they're gonna show you, I got fists, and I got a gun, and you better not call me dumb. You understand? How to hustle this dope, you can't tell me nothing. You know what I mean? And, and I live that life and I see it. So I just think that some people have disassociated themselves from the struggle and have just associated themselves with the material side. Look at what we built. Look at what we've done, as opposed to look at what we've put out in our students.
Agreed, agreed. Greg, you have anything?
Yeah, from a standpoint, I, um, you know, I hear, I heard you saying about, my, my niece is a teacher, and I put together countless things for her to take to the classroom. And you hear about how much money they're putting into the class. They aren't getting much out. As you know, Victor, um, you know, I sponsored on the fact of, uh, finances. But I think they, you know, she started out excited. And she's working on her doctorate. Um, very intelligent. And, um, the thing is burnout. You know, and she said the disrespect about the students. And, um, obviously, sometimes when you get the disrespect from the students, the parents come and they double down on it.
Yes, yes, yes.
Something, because classroom is about structure. And if you can learn in that environment, uh, you know, in that challenging environment, and I say you, you do well, whether you do well going to college or, you know, in a trade. And I think some people are more successful at trade. That's just my opinion. I mean, what, and you know, this is my question for parents, getting, getting parents more enthused about their child learning. You know, what can you implement to help with that?
I want parents to, to be able to speak with a, a teacher. When my son was in the tenth grade and the colleges started calling, they presented to him what he would be able to make financially. What, what going to school would do for him, you know, in terms of elevating him. I don't think our children are really getting that. They're just getting, do your tests, make a good grade, get out of school. They're not getting the full benefit of what all of that entails. If you do this, this, and this, this will happen. On top of that, Mr. Greg, Mr. Craig, they come home and see their parents burned out, struggling in a position that they went to college to achieve. So they look at that like, wow, if mom went to college and she miserable, what I'm going for? You know what I'm saying? So we have to teach them the whole element of life, that there'll be up times, down times. There'll be times when you feel happy with what you're doing. There'll be times when you dislike it, but hold the course, better yourself. And I just think we don't communicate with the children anymore. We talk at them. We don't talk to them. That worked for us, because the, you know, Mr. Bazzard and them used to put it on us, but, and we respected them. You understand what I'm saying? But it's a new day and a new time, and the university of YouTube and the university of Facebook teach these children just about anything they wanna know. And sometimes they know more than the teachers know. But what they don't know that the teachers know is that this is a process. Because what you see on the internet is instantaneous. That's microwave life. That's not even real. So this teacher is showing you, yeah, I come here some days, I'm tired, yeah, but I do my job. And this is what I'm showing you about life, about what you do, Mr. Miller. You know, I know you see some things.
Oh, yeah, most of them.
Or you as well, Mr. Victor, you see things in the school system that'll make you say, I don't wanna go back to that place. But you pick yourself up and you go back. So I just think there is not a, a microwave way to do this thing. And although we've put a lot of time in it, and you, I know you all see it now, where the grandparents are now thought they were gonna relax, and now they gotta pick up and, and, and take the grand. They have to do it, because there's a disconnect. Likewise with us as parents, we, we thought we were free once the children got into eleventh, tenth, eleventh, or twelfth grade, but no, we gotta pick back up and we gotta show up. If we show up for, for, um, for the school board meetings and for things pertaining to, 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 to education, the children will take it serious. I promise you, there are parents at home saying, I ain't got no blankety-blank time to be going to no blankety-blank school, but they're there for homecoming. They're there for the big game, and the children see that. They're raised very wise, but they're very weak. They don't know how to communicate themselves. And if we teach them how to accept and, and give, receive and, and give, and compromise, if we can do that, then we have succeeded. And that's what the school board, the parents, everyone has to get involved in at this point, and it's realistic. It's not, it's not impossible. It can work. I believe that. But all of building buildings and getting new, that's not gonna do it. You give me the parents, and you give me the children, and you give me a broken-down slave house, and I produce better children than you producing in high school with all the technology. I promise you that, because I know that they need to be heard and they need to be, um, empathized with, and they need to know that someone is concerned about them. They throw parties for these children after they graduate, knowing that these children can't even read, man.
Man, I've been saying that for a long. You throw a party for something you supposed to do. I never understood it.
Yeah, it don't make sense, but that's where the, that's where the parents have dropped the ball. You understand? But talking with parent is hard work, and I wanna say this before we go, uh, you know, my son, smart guy, I mean, my oldest son, not Zion, but my oldest son, you know, in his last year of matter of high school, he decided he wanted to be a gang member. He wanted to be a tough guy, and he is a tough guy. You understand what I'm saying? But, uh, I got called up to the school one day, and when my daddy get up here, my daddy gonna set it off, and my daddy, when I got up there and found out what he did, I said, man, get your ass ass in the car. Well, you ain't gonna defend me. I said, you don't deserve defense. To the, to the, to the teacher, to the, to the principal, and you're being disrespectful to me. Listen, my son didn't talk to me for two years. He told everybody that I sold him out. If that's how you feel, buddy. I did my part. I did my part. And, uh, that's how we have to attack. Man, listen, we're not our children's friend. We wanna be. But until they are fair, we gotta be a parent.
That's right.
I got two things. I got two things that I know you got to go with six. So I wanna first, I wanna make a statement, and I got my last question for you. As a parent, as a parent, I'm making my statement, as a parent, you gotta motivate your kids when it comes to education. I know what I do personally with my daughter. We kinda, every year, I, this year, if you make such and such, you get a brand-new iPhone. Now, we ain't bringing no Cs up in the house. You know what I'm saying? It gotta be straight As, and probably one B. You know what I'm saying? It's, it's an incentive. You get out, I told him, when she go to high school, I told her straight up, do your whole four years of high school, if you make at least the A, B honor roll or straight As, the whole four years, not the first two or the last two, I'll buy you, I'll buy you a brand-new car for graduation.
That's real.
That's what I told him. Cause you gotta give him something to motivate. You know what I'm saying? You, you got to motivate him. That's what y'all, if you motivate him, man, you can't believe how much they can do.
I've seen some great students go out of man in high school now. Don't get me wrong. We have, we have some fireballs that come out of man in high school. Jabril Wilson, that is, is a, is a, a, a international attorney now in DC. These, I mean, they, they, they powerhouses, man.
Stop being your kids' friends, man. You know what I'm saying? And be a parent. Sometimes, if you know your child struggling in school, it's not because they stupid. They just not motivated. Give them a reason to be motivated.
That's right. That's right. Go tell them to rake the yard.
Cause guess what? They asked for to rake the yard anyway.
I agree with that. And that, that is my idea in the whole school system incentive. I couldn't think of the word, but you brought it out, uh, Mr. Miller. We have to give them ta- uh, periodic incentives. And I believe that it will keep them motivated.
There you go.
Steps, many steps. Steps towards greatness.
That's right, because if they looking at the long term, it's like, I'm never gonna make it there. But I can give you something to show you that, like you said, you're making steps. You're making steps.
Last question. Jamil, November fifth, why should the citizens of Clanton County vote for you?
Because I believe that, from what we've said today and from what I've expressed during my, um, campaign, that my heart is in seeing sincere change. I don't wanna lie to people and tell them I can do what I can't do, but I think if they give me this four years and they stay on me, scrutinize my, my, question me about things, and if I can't answer them, and if I can't do what I'm supposed to do, then okay, you can vote me out. Why they should vote for me? Because the same people have been in place for over twenty years. And if you're not satisfied with what has been done or part of it that is not working, and the major part of what is not working is our children aren't understanding why they need education. So if we can give them that and prove that it works, yeah, then think about voting for Jamil.
Yeah, it is. Ladies and gentlemen, Jamil Zahmir, running for Clanton County School Board. Good luck, brother.
Thank you so much.
Guys, go to the polls, man. Whether you vote, please vote. That's right. That's right. Fight for that right.
That's right.
Please go out there and vote.
Let, let me say this. We twenty-seven minutes in, look like, uh, I, I'm very disheartened by the, by the, the mudslinging and everything that's going on out there with the, with the, uh, with the, with the, um, campaigning and everything. Uh, it bothers me a lot, and it shows a separation that everyone should see. And if everyone is, whether you're Democrat, Republican, or indifferent, if everyone is not on the same page for the same goal, then we're gonna always have conflict in our wonderful town. We're gonna always have it. You understand what I'm saying? And I think that there's a place, there's a median that we can meet and do right by the people. Because we swore in to help people, not for personal gain. I'm not in this thing because of what I can do for me. I'm in it for what I can do for, for the collective. So I'm, I don't wanna bring in religion, but man, I really pray that we get over this thing that we have, this egotistical idea that I'm the best and my, my team is the best. Look, it's collective. And if we become collective and respect each other and, and choose the right person for the job and literally back that person and not try to block their e- efforts, I believe that we can save our children, because we're in trouble. I thank you all for giving me that moment. I appreciate it, man. I thank you all for having me on. Mr. Miller, Mr. Wh- Mr. Victor, and Mr. Craig, I, I really thank y'all for having me on. Thank you very much. Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you.
And we got Reggie coming on soon.
Yeah, Reggie's not, he's underway to rule yet.
Yeah, man, that was good, bro. You know, you vote for someone you think is the best candidate for what you looking for. for what you looking for, or your family. You know what I'm saying? So don't vote because you know him or her. Don't vote because you like him or her. You vote because they could benefit you and yours.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah. Change only comes when you want it, you expect it.
Yeah.
And you go-
Exactly.
A lot of people don't like change.
Yeah. I agree. I was just having a conversation with my wife today.